This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. We do have the presence of the quorum. The meeting has been duly called and noticed. The meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you, everybody, for coming out today. We'll start as we do most meetings in this workshop with public participation. We do have Ms. Carolyn Davis signed up. Ms. Davis, if you want to come on up and take your five minutes.
Good morning.
Morning.
To President Washman, School Board members, and Superintendent Crawford. References made to the last School Board meeting and the report on the District of Innovation Teachers, also known as DOI teachers in Tyler ISD. It was reported by the presenter that the number of DOI teachers is now at a total of 220, which it was said is 33 more than the year before. This is concerning. The presenter stated that he had yet to encounter a retired teacher who wanted to return to the classroom. He goes on to say, "This is not a thing." This is really concerning because in other school districts in the state of Texas and throughout the country, some retired teachers are returning to classrooms. You almost have to be under a rock to not be aware of that. It's simply astonishing that the leaders of this school district are not aware of that. It was stated that DOI teachers are now hired with the expectation of becoming certified. I was really relieved to hear this, for this has definitely not always been the case. Just go back and look at some of the previous videos. You don't have to go back for maybe a year, a year and a half ago. And keep in mind, DOI has been implemented since about 2015, 2016. But you just go back a year or so ago, and you're going to see that the expectation has not always been for DOI teachers to become certified. Changing the subject, references made to my email dated September the 8th this year to Superintendent Crawford, Board members with the CC, to the principal of Jack Elementary. In my email, I expressed my concern about the racial makeup of the teachers and campus leaders at Jack Elementary. According to a TEA Texas Performance Academic Report, Jack has, I think it says 1.5 African-American teachers and two Hispanic teachers. The student body at Jack is about 20% African-American, 18% Hispanic, and about 53% white. Additionally, the principal, the assistant principal, the dean of students, the master teacher, the nurse, the media tech specialist, police officer assigned to Jack Elementary, they're all white. In fact, the only minorities in leadership position at Jack are the head custodian, who is an African-American according to this report, and the lead cafeteria person, who is Hispanic. What visual message does this send to minority students that they can aspire to become? Certainly not the leader of a classroom as a teacher, or the leader of a school as a principal, or any school leadership position. What visual message does this send to not only the minority students, but students at, all students at Jack? Is the message being conveyed that certain jobs are reserved for whites only? This should be the last message the district would want to take a chance of conveying to students, even if it's unintentionally, unintentional. In your response email to me, the demographics I just cited are referred to as intangibles, intangibles that you said you can appreciate and that you also share my eye for. I appreciate that. This statement led me to look more closely at the tangibles, at the 2021-2022 STAR Performance Test results. This is what I saw. At approaches grade level or above, which is my understanding, this is considered passing. In third grade math, 76% of students in the state pass the STAR test. However, at Jack, only 59% of African-American students, 55% of Hispanic students pass the math STAR test, third grade.
Ms. Davis, it's about five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me wrap it up. My time is up. I could just go on down the line, but you can pull this information up for yourself. In about five other areas, African-American students and Hispanic students are faring considerably below the state level. Jack Elementary is a leader in Me School, one of only two schools in Texas to have this distinction. Can not Jack be a leader in all areas and take the lead on important issues like this and begin making changes? Or will it just continue business as usual, knowing the potential damage that is being done to all the students at Jack? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on down the agenda. We have a review today of the Employee Healthcare Plan. So Tasha Bjork, Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations, our CFO, will be providing the board a presentation of the healthcare plan that we currently are under and some, talk about it with the board, some concerns, some challenges that we've been monitoring, that y'all need to have a conversation about, and we need to present. Ms. Bjork.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Okay, I'll start on the first page. We're currently in year six with our provider that we have now, and this is the last year of our contract, so we need to start looking at other options. We've been self-funded for, ever since I've been here. I don't know when it became self-funded, but I've been here almost 25 years. And it's always been pretty fiscally responsible. We've had a few years where we've had a little blips and had losses, but it seems to have gotten worse since COVID. The last couple of years, we've had some really bad claims, and we are having to put more and more into the system. We have very low premiums, as you know, and we can only raise them 10% per year because of the Affordable Healthcare Act. And then, if you turn the page, this shows our claims for the last six years. The first year, we were under another provider. And then it shows each year how we've gone up. Year 22 and 23 are 15% increases in our cost. The next page shows how much we've had to pay out of the general fund each year. And as you can see, it's growing larger and larger. This past year was $7 million.
Ms. Bjork, are you on the PowerPoint?
I'm sorry. I'm sitting here just going through my PowerPoint.
Okay.
Okay, the last year was $7 million. And the main reason, especially this past year, are our claims that go over the $200,000. We are responsible for any claim up to $200,000. At that point, we have insurance that we pay for at the cost of about $1 million a year that kicks in and reimburses us for any claim over $200,000. And that has increased. Normally, we have three or four a year. But this past year, in '23, we had 23 patients that hit that stop loss. And that was about $4.6 million that we had to fund. That normally, we don't have that happen with the amount that we have that get stop loss. Some other items in the healthcare fund that run, that are really high, our pharmaceutical is around $4.8 million a year. When you consider we're $18 million in total cost, that's quite significant. Dialysis management, that's just for someone that looks over all our dialysis claims. That's $450,000 alone. And then the insurance, as I said, is around a little over $1 million. Our third-party administration, they pay all our claims and review them and make sure they are, follow our health plan. That was around, I believe, $300,000. And then we have also the issue with the freestanding emergency rooms that are, it's higher for us, those are than the regular emergency room that we should be going to.
And that's actually throttled back a little bit?
It has, because we put a...
However, there's nothing we can control on that.
No.
It's just education of the staff.
Right.
To use the CHRISTUS ER.
Yes.
But nothing prevents them from going there and us having to pay those out of network.
That's right.
And being billed, okay. What does that cost?
This past year, it was around a little over $300,000.
It's been higher than that, though, Ms. Bjork.
Yeah, it's been like $400,000 and $500,000.
All to get an IV, usually, whatever is considered emergent care.
Right.
Which could be...
It may not be emergent.
Cold therapy, like cold room therapy, a massage on a crick neck or something.
They turn it into emergent care.
Sorry to use that East Texas term.
Right. And so because of this, and the fact we had to put $7 million into it this past year, and the trend this year is just as bad or worse, we need, we just can't risk continuing with that current strategy. And our contract ends 9/30. The only other option that we've seen, we've looked at several, and the premiums were much higher. We tried to do Blue Cross Blue Shield just alone, because that's who it is, TRS Active Care uses Blue Cross Blue Shield, and it was outrageous. And so, the only other option for us at this point is TRS Active Care. And just as a point of reference, about 60% of our employees participate in our plan. And most are enrolled in Plan B, which is comparable to TRS Active Care Primary. And of course, the Active Care premiums, as you know, are higher than what we currently pay. We pay $225 a month per employee. But then in the end, we really pay more because we have to pick up the loss of the fund each year. And so, we will need to contribute more to remain competitive. If we increase the premium from $225 a month to $375 a month, it'll be about $2.7 million, which I currently budget about $3,000 extra in general fund for insurance.
$3 million?
I mean, $3 million, sorry. Extra for the health plan, because that's been about what we've had to put into it. And it will actually lower the TRS Active Care premium, except for the employees that cover employee and family or employee and spouse. We have about a little over 300 that are in that category. So for that category, we will contribute another $50 per month for those employee groups, and that costs around $180K, so $3 million.
So the strategy on that board, just to, Cliff notes that, clarify it, is that the $7 million, the $5 million that we paid last year, the $7 million, the trend that we're really concerned about, that we've been able to cover, but it's not sustainable, we can actually go back and throw some of that money that we've budgeted back toward premiums, covering more towards our employees. And then the other, what's remaining, if you were to take the $3 million, and there's $4 million left, not saying we want to take $7 million, but we're going to give opportunity to ourselves to potentially provide compensation boosts.
Right.
Not all of it, back into the salary coffers, but some.
I have that budgeted. That would come from fund balance at this point.
True, it'd come from fund balance.
Right. We've been able to cover it in the past couple of years because we've had the ESAR grant, which we are paying for our one-to-one devices. But at the same time, I'm still budgeting the one-to-one devices in general funds so that next year, when we have to pay for them again, we aren't having to come up with $2 million.
Remember, Uncle ESAR runs out this year.
Yes, this is the last year. So we will not have that available next year to pay for one-to-one devices. So I will not have that $2 million to help cover health insurance. And just as a point of reference, we have seen a survey that indicates the average premium to contribute is $325. And these are our area districts, Lindell, White House, Chapel Hill, and Longview. And remember, we were going to try to do $375.
$375 for most participants.
And $425 for the others.
And that still does not cover all of that for those others?
Exactly. There's a little over 300. There are 76 employees that are married in that number. And when you take them out, it's about 250 that will pay more. The 76 will not pay more because they will get double the employer contribution. And there are some things we can coach them on.
So you're saying that there's 76 in there that are married to another TISD?
Yes.
That participate. And another strategy is, she's alluding to, is for one employee to go employee only, and the other one just to go employee and kids.
Because those are both cheaper options.
Cheaper options. It's crazy.
So we will be...
When combined? When separated. If you do every, if you do employee and family.
Yeah.
That's the expensive one. Employee family costs more than employee and then employee plus kids over there. Yes.
Right. Anytime you throw in the spouse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're pretty expensive.
Right.
Yeah. Well, and that's, we'll probably talk here, but that kind of alludes to some of the reasons our stop loss is, is really exorbitant.
Yeah, mainly, a lot of our stop loss claims are spouses.
That don't work in the district.
Right.
How are the numbers looking for this year?
Well, we're not, this year, we've only had two months, but we're in the hole each month. Mm-hmm. It's a little worse, actually. Yes. Okay, the benefits of Active Care are that, right now, we're in such a narrow network that we can pretty much only go to Tyler, or just in the vicinity of other CHRISTUS, you know, in other communities.
East Texas, Victoria, and San Antonio, maybe Corpus.
Right.
That's, that's kind of the CHRISTUS network.
And so what this does for employees, it opens up the whole state. So they can go anywhere in the state, any doctor, any hospital, ER, whatever they need to do. So they won't have such a narrow network, which a lot of people have complained about that, frankly. They can't go to Indiana or Center, you know, if they have cancer, you know, there's places they want to go that they can't without it costing much more because it's out of network. And then the other benefits, I mean, we have some of these same benefits, but zero-dollar preventive care costs, 24/7 customer service, health coaches, weight and loss nutrition programs, virtual healthcare, and mental health benefits. And then, as far as communication, TRS actually sends representatives out to assist employees on each site. And then our, our benefits consultant, FBS, always, always helps us with this, too. And then we and payroll, HR, and financial services will help, too. We'll go to each location, talk to employees, consult with anyone that needs help in making a final decision. And I don't know if you have access, Joseph, can you put this on me?
While you're doing that, you may have to blow that up a little bit if you can. I do want to publicly state, this is kind of, it's, it's us, not you thing. CHRISTUS has done a really good job of being a partner with us, and will continue to be. This, this one would not cut off access to them, and I think that they've had a good run so far. You know, if the board decides this is something y'all don't want to do, we'll continue to partner with them and see what we can do. But really, seriously, I want to make sure that, that it's said publicly that this has been a good experience with that hospital, with the system. It's really things that's, that exist outside of our agreement that's causing us to bring this to y'all today, that you run into when you're self-funded, large entities having to deal with that. So, proceed, Ms. Bjork.
And the, this comparison of the TRS cost versus our cost, keep in mind, this is on this rate. It will change. It may go up, they can't go up more than 10%. And they may actually go down, because they did go down this past year because of the state funneled some money towards that.
Self-funded districts were not included in that statute. I'm not sure if our local senator is the one that carried that bill or not, but they did provide more money to TRS, for TRS member districts, to keep those premiums down.
And so this just shows you what, if we pay the $375 up in the top pink, what the employee cost will be in the middle column versus what they pay now on our three plans, high deductible, Plan B, and Plan A. And if you look over to the side with the exception of, that, it looks to me like TRS tries to steer employees away from high deductible, because the other plans are better and cheaper in some instances. And so, as you can tell, like the, the Active Care Primary and the Primary Plus, both employee and employing children will go down quite a bit. Now, as far as the employee and spouse and employee and family, you have to take another $600 off that. What theirs will go up, because we're going to put an extra $50 a month on their premiums. So that's just an analysis of how it will affect different employee groups and the number of employees that are on each plan.
So in theory, all of the, all the plans on the, on the left-hand side of the sheet, the, our employee contribution is entered into the, the middle column af, I mean, that...
After our $375.
Okay. And that's, the employee cost is, is monthly, right there in the middle?
Uh-huh. And then the third column is what they are currently paying.
Okay.
On our plans. Any questions about that?
At the beginning, you had a list of expenses that were increasing, like pharmaceuticals and emergency. Does TRS, will TRS switch have any impact on any of those expenses?
No, because it's up, it's theirs now. We just pay the premiums. We have, we don't handle claims anymore. We, they handle everything. We don't have to worry about stop loss. We don't have to get that insurance anymore, nothing. They have to get stop loss insurance to cover claims now.
But as far as co-pays go for Medicaid, we, we don't necessarily know what...
I mean, we have, we have an idea of what they are now. Some of the good things about TRS Active Care is like, you, if you go to the doctor, you're not on high deductible, but you're on the other ones. You, you pay a co-pay and don't have to worry about meeting your deductible. They also require you to have a primary care physician, which we've tried to do that, but have not been very successful. So hopefully, that will result in employees finding out things earlier, earlier diagnosis. But TRS will require a primary care physician. And so, in my opinion, that's a good thing. And, I mean, they have a lot of availability of doctors in, in hospitals, and so I think it'll be a benefit. But I feel like most people that live here will still use their same doctor they've been used, same hospital.
So, I'm wondering, will there be in-network and out-of-network doctors in, in the plan? And is there a risk of losing?
Only if, if you go out of state.
Okay. Blue Cross Blue Shield, the doctor has to accept that, which most doctors...
Yes.
Accept Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Okay.
Here in Tyler. Both hospitals do.
Now, the pharmacy...
I think Azalea does as well, and some of those are better scot and white.
Yeah, the pharmacy's gonna, it's at most major pharmacies. We have CVS, Walgreens, those type of things. I don't know that they'll do every little pharmacy that we have.
Mom and pop stuff, that's what you're kind of hearing about. That is one ton.
Yes.
But you're hearing about this where they don't have a Walgreens or a, or a CVS, or of course, some of the mom and pops are now partnering with Walgreens and CVS. So like, take a really, really small town that might have a mo, one mom and pop pharmacy, yes, they may not be on the plan. You have to drive from Tenahaw into Carthage to, you know, to, to get your meds or whatever. That's just a, an example there. Tyler is certainly not in that predicament.
Right.
With the available pharmacies that we do have here.
And I'm sure they have mail order, too, which that is a really good thing to use anyway, if you can.
And, I mean, just like with anything, you kind of see this with DirecTV. You're trying to watch a Cowboy game or a college football game, it's up to the proprietor to whether or not they want to partner with TRS. I don't think they just tell folks that you can't do it. There might be certain requirements, monetary requirements or whatever, that doesn't make sense for a mom and pop pharmacy. But some of the ones here that are more robust probably will participate, because you've got, I mean, White, White House used to be, but you've got Lindell, Chapel Hill, and others that are, that are participating. I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard anything from them.
If they've had pharmaceutical, the only one we've heard is Henderson. And I think it was because of what I described there, some of the, the local pharmacies might have been shut out a little bit. Other thing on the freestanding ER, TRS Active Care fights that, just like we've been fighting it. But again, the, the member districts are not on the hook for that. If that's another one, or you know, along the list that you were talking about, so you don't get surprised with a visit there for a massage and us having to pay for that. Okay, does anybody have any further questions or comments regarding this topic?
Well, is the overall timeline, if we were to do this, would this go into effect next, would it go into effect next year or the year?
The, the timeline is, we brought it to you for a workshop today. We've got to inform TRS before December 31st. So you've got 13 days to consider, 14 days to consider with a possible action item on the next regular board meeting. So by December 31st. Unless, unless we need another special call before, before December 31st. In theory, Tasha, from what I understand, if we potentially would have been on TRS this year, as an example, and had the exact same scenarios, it, it might have saved us about $5 million, is that...
Well, we would have, if we were paying the premiums like this, we would have saved about $4 million, yes.
$4 million.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And the, there's, it's a lot of risk, because you don't know how many people are going to get that sick, and you just have no idea to plan it, because we've had usually four, three, four, five, and that's it. I, it was... I, it was just an unusual year, I don't believe I've ever had that many in one year.
Yeah, we, we kind of experienced in the last year of the, the current plan, that anomaly year that really showed, I guess, the risk of, of how it, you know, where it could get us.
Yeah, peel back to the PowerPoint, and I know Mr. Burfield's got a question on answer, but peel back to the annual cost per year, and then we can, there you go.
Well, the cost is right there.
And then we'll, we'll flip toggle back and forth between the two, but go ahead, Mr. Burfield.
I was just curious if we've met with Christus and explained this to them, and they have an understanding, you know, and they're not going to be surprised if we did something different?
That's true.
Okay.
Yeah, they've, I've talked to their CFO, too, and they pulled the P and L, because they don't see, they only see the claims that they get paid, they don't see what all our other expenses are. And so they've seen, I think they pulled it earlier, they've seen how much we're losing.
They've got the most recent, I sent it to...
They have this one.
Yes.
I sent one like in August.
Now, what's in front of the board is a, is a, is a com, com, a combination of everything, right? It's aggregate.
It's a year of our, it's from, it ended, started October first, twenty-two, and ended September thirty, twenty-three. And this is just paid, we have more claims coming in.
And so what Christus has is a month-by-month view of it.
Right.
Pretty large spreadsheet, we condensed it for y'all and for me, but they've got everything, starting back in, when did I first meet with them?
Well, I think I started talking to you back in, when I saw how the year was going, and that it was really, I think, and you may have talked to them in June or July.
Yeah, I had a meeting with them in the summer, kind of told them what, what our project was, and kind of going through all of this to see what, what else might be out there. And of course, they, they're like, we can help you, and I was like, I don't think it's y'all, I think it's, it's the, it's, it's our budget.
It's everything else.
So they've been very receptive and still want to partner with us in a lot of ways to be able to do that. So I've had conversations within the last week also, and let them know what's, what's concerning for us.
You know, I really appreciate Christus, and I really appreciate their partnership, I appreciate their mission, everything about them. And hopefully, through this, they'll still be able to compete, you know, for, for that healthcare for employees, I mean, they'll still be able to, so that's kind of the silver lining, I guess, for them.
So the biggest change going to the new plan versus Christus is the administration of the plan? Our employees will still be able to use Christus as a primary source of healthcare.
They can stay with their doctor, they are not going to have to change.
Right. So, so what is the biggest loss for Christus in relation to this change?
If, if employees go to a different hospital.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Like if, say you have a baby that's born real early and you want to take them to Dallas.
They do that anymore.
Versus leaving them in the NICU in Christus.
Yeah, rough estimates, and I haven't discussed this with them recently, but rough estimates are that eighty-five percent of our folks are locked in and probably won't go shopping.
Right.
It's the other fifteen percent that, you know, they, they want to kind of work at and maintain those relationships with, that's their estimates. Another one is, you might want to, the, the percentage of cost versus Medicaid. Medicaid? Medicare's for the elderly, correct? Medicaid, remember this, the percentage of, of, of cost from medic, the one twenty-five, hundred twenty-five percent of Medicaid?
On, on what? I mean, that was that one specific thing.
You know what, uh...
Do you know?
The question is, what's the, what's Christus looking at?
Oh, well, they're not, okay, when they have blue cross, blue shield, they take blue cross, blue shield, but they don't get as much from blue cross, blue shield as they were from us.
Yeah, the percentages, the percentage versus the, something about a weight.
I don't know their rates to us, there's not a, a specific.
There's kind of a business-to-business risk there, impact, you know, percentage they keep versus what the...
I guess we're saying it's a little higher, when, when, when we're the manager of, of the plan, that's, we're, we're the funder of the plan, to whereas the agreement between blue cross, blue shield, and a hospital may have a different negotiated rate.
Exactly.
Which may be lower.
Okay, right.
Right, because it's volume, like you said, they know they're going to have access to more.
Okay, well, I, I think you put a lot of work into it, and I, and I, looking at it from the employee's perspective, I, I think that you're doing the best you can with the insurance market as it is now, everything continually go up, and I, I think that you are trying to work out something that's going to be beneficial to the employee and, and the, like, you know, the, the spouse being individual and the other spouse being, taking the kids, you know, things like that's going to be very important for them to be aware of and, and to take advantage of. So I think that that will be a crucial factor, is educating them and making sure that they are aware of the options to save money.
Right, and then even like, if someone's carrying their spouse and their spouse works, they're going to want to go to that spouse's insurance and see, okay, is this a cheaper option? Or even go on the marketplace to look for insurance for their spouse.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we definitely have a project ahead of us to have a soft landing for our employees and our organization as we transition here, so human resources has been alerted, our payroll benefits department's ready and willing to assist, against, we've got other resources with FBS and TRS to assist as well. So, well, there'll be a lot of coaching that needs to occur during all of this, and a lot of learning.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Wash, one thing I just, I wanted to emphasize, and I know we didn't just brush over it, but you can kind of tell the story behind the story here, if you start looking at nineteen, and you had the COVID year, and then we know what's happened to the world since 2020. And so as you toggle back and forth between this to where you see an incros, increase from COVID, to where no one was having elective surgeries, they were putting things off that, that, that may, needed to be done, or maybe didn't go see doctors because we were afraid to go to hospitals, rightfully concerning and rightfully so, respectful, respectful of that. But as you can tell, the supply chain and inflation, not accusing, our partners have taken advantage of that, but certainly pharmaceutical companies, their medications have increased because a lot of that has come from different parts of the world, that we're having these geopolitical issues with. So if you toggle to the next slide, I forgot, Tasha, you've got it, you can look at that even here, and that catch-up year from 2020 to 2021, you're like, oh, okay, things are getting better. And then here we've been the last few years with the cost of everything. So, you know, as we kind of state the case of the reasons why we're meeting today, I think that these two slides really do impact us as a self-funded plan that other districts have not. And we've been talking about this, Ms. Bjork, you and I have, even before COVID, about, we just don't know if this is a sustainable thing, we'll keep doing it as long as we possibly can. It's even gotten to the point now to where y'all saw, we can't even really claim that we've got an advantage because we are self-funded, as far as budget, budget items go. Within those two subgroups, if you saw where, go back to the, to the...
The one, the other people pay?
That shows, well, it shows the TRS plan versus what we can do. Like, if we were to switch, that's over with you, Joseph, yeah, not that one, the other one. Yeah. If you look at employee-only, employing children, if you start talking about some of our neighboring districts, that right there alone so, shows that we're probably behind in saying that, or right at saying that we, hey, we're better, we're self-funded, there's more money in your back pocket. They have now finally caught up, because the legislature put some money in, and TRS has held premiums down, whereas our self-fundedness, we've not been able to hold those premiums down.
We're going to pay more per employee, so we'll be, we'll have that edge.
Yep, that's right. And we'll continue to be creative as it goes along.
Longview only pays two twenty-five, so we're going to be paying three seventy-five. They'll probably have to raise theirs when we do this.
One of the things unfortunately, that's, that all insurance companies are aware of, and in general, since COVID, the health of America has declined significantly, so there are going to be a lot more people having to use insurance as opposed to in the past. People that were relatively healthy before have gone through the COVID episodes, and their health has definitely decreased, and they're going to the doctor a lot more frequent now. So unfortunately, the insurance cost is going to go up.
Yeah, we're, we're sicker and we're older.
Yeah.
Than, than we've ever been, obviously, because of healthcare, not sicker because of healthcare. But that is something that, you know, if the board would, if y'all would look at us and say, well, y'all need to fix this. I look back at you and say, how do I make people that don't even work for us healthier? If you're starting to talk about solid stop loss, or even folks that do work for us, we've tried some incentivization and things like that, and it's just not substantial enough to, to really inspire people to go do it. It's, it's a predicament, and you're right, Mr. Newsom, one hundred percent, that it's a, it's a national epidemic and not just a localized Tyler thing, so I, I think this is a, is a begrudgingly recommendation that we move this way, and don't want to do it, don't want to give up our freedom, for one, but I don't know of any other strategy that we could do, and, and make this a thing that we can say, well, in five years, let's plan for this, let's sustain it. I don't think we can pull that off.
And, you know, if this was our sole focus, we would only hire teachers in their twenties, right? But it's not.
Yep.
Our sole focus is successful student outcomes, and this is just part of it, this is part of the deal here, so we're going to do the best we can do to take care of everybody, but not, you know, risk an extra four million a year, potentially, or more.
Yeah.
So, keep our, keep the main thing the main thing, and, and do what we need to do in other places.
Long, I mean, it's been a long time, the state said it at that amount, but I could not tell you how long, it's been a while.
Okay, anybody else have any, any questions or comments? Thank you for the presentation, it's pretty enlightening. Okay, well, we do have some things to go over in executive session, unless I'm missing something, which I'm not. So we'll go ahead and take a break and go into executive session.